I'd like to cut out the April 29th, 2014 Longmont City Council session to order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos. Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first person to appear before us, Republican invited to be heard, is Brian Hanson. So could you please come down and state your name and address for the record?
Mayor and council members, good to see you tonight. My name is Brian Hanson, from Longmont Avenue, Longmont, Colorado. I'm here tonight just to continue with my slideshow. And as I promised, I have a really nice audio visual coming in the future. But this is just to continue. Hopefully, I've picked up right where I left off, so you don't have any redundancy here. Basically, my discussion was about my concern that I personally feel like there's an inconsistency of having heavy industrial operations in multiple residential types of neighborhoods, especially where there's a lot of young kids and there's some routes necessary for kids to get to school. So I just wanted to show you some examples of why I thought this was fairly incompatible with a residential neighborhood. And I think I pushed the right button here. You can see a lot of kids walk on this sidewalk here where they do a lot of loading and unloading from this heavy steel operation here. And those beams that you saw before, they were actually, as I recall, they were moving on a forklift. These guys are, you know, looking back and watching these things kind of come towards them. So, and you can see there's a lot of kid traffic on this particular sidewalk where they move a lot of semi-trailers and material in and out. These women here are actually kind of hustling because unfortunately, you can't see the forklift in this picture. I didn't have quite a wide enough angle, but it gets a little scary for some of the pedestrians on there. And you can see the kids like to play in this area quite a bit, too. When it's closed, you'll see the kids outside the gate and even inside there, some of the skateboards and stuff like that that the kids leave behind. You can see, just from the size of that skateboard, this is not a light industrial type of operation. Those beams weigh many thousands of pounds. And then you can see this truck here. I would wish I had a video of this because the truck didn't even see these kids. They came to a halt as the truck just backed up right in front of them there. I'm glad the timing was as good as it was. The consequences could have been much worse there, obviously. And these are some kids coming back from school, it looks like. And you should look at the back of this trailer real carefully because you'll see, unfortunately, again, this is not video. Someone goes flying right behind there as is backing up there. And that's a big steel I-beam. You know, if he got caught between that and the fence or something like that, it could be somewhat hazardous. And although, you know, people like to think that the trucks see everything, you can see my trash can that's up there on the sidewalk gets picked up by the back of that safety bumper on the semi-truck and gets drug around. And I would hate to think if there's kids in an area like that, what the consequences could be. And you can see the trucks are fairly aggressive coming in and out of here. And the truck, I mean, we were told originally when this operation moved over here that it would be a lot, I guess it would be finished in another day. We've got a lot more to go. Thank you very much.
All right, is there anybody else from the audience who'd like to come and speak? First call, Public Invited to be Heard? Okay, that concludes Public Invited to be Heard. So we're ready for...
Mayor, your first item on tonight's agenda will be presented by Sam Safie, President of the Longmont Sister Cities Association. He'll be introducing the 2014 ambassadors.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. I feel I'm among friends, so it's nice to see all of you. Sister Cities, we have, just to bring you up to date, we have selected our ambassadors or students to both Japan and Mexico, and they have been training cultural, as well as food, and a little bit of language. They will, we will introduce them to you tonight. And we have also selected four grownups, so four adults who will be accompanying them. So I will ask them to come and introduce themselves first, and then our ambassadors. While I'm here, I would like to thank you for your support all these years, and hopefully you will continue to support us in the future. Have a nice evening.
Okay, let's start with Ambassador Chaperones from Mexico, please.
Hello, my name is Michelle Kempkes, and I am a teacher at Twin Peaks Charter Academy. And I'm looking forward to taking this wonderful group of children through a wonderful cultural experience this summer to Mexico.
Hi, my name is Alan Kempkes, her husband. And I look forward as well to taking these young people to Mexico. And I hope that I can help them to be good ambassadors to portray Longmont, Colorado, and the U.S. in the best light that they possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Muy buenas tardes a todos. Me llamo Alondra Palomares. Tengo 14 años y atiendo la escuela San Semerosco. Estoy muy emocionada para viajar con todos ellos a México. Tengo un día.
Hola, me llamo Isaiah Mark. Yo atiendo la escuela de Westview. Tengo 13 años, en grado ocho. Yo bueno visito a la México en verano porque la comida, la cultura.
Hola, me llamo Peter Thompson. I am 13 years old and I'm in eighth grade. I go to Flagstaff Academy, and I'm looking forward to the exchange, exchange to try new food and to learn more about the culture of Mexico.
Hola, buenas noches. Me llamo Penelope. I attend Colridge Middle School. I am in eighth grade and I'm 13 years old. I'm looking forward to the exchange because I'm really, I really want to make new friends in different areas and learn more about the culture.
Hola, buenas tardes. Me llamo Rachel. I'm excited to go to Mexico this summer to practice my Spanish. I am in eighth grade at Westview Middle School, and I'm 14 years old.
Hola, me llamo Emma Flynn. Yo estoy en la escuela Autónoma Middle School. I am 13 years old, and I am very excited to go to Mexico to learn about the culture.
Hola, me llamo Dee Hewitt. I am in eighth grade. I go to Watershed in Boulder. And I can't wait to make new friends in Mexico.
Konnichiwa. My name is Lisa Harvey. I'm one of the chaperones for the Chino Japan trip. I'm an English teacher at Longmont High School, and I'm very excited to get to work with such a great group of kids.
Konnichiwa. I'll spare you the rest of my Japanese, because that's about it. I'm Janice Redden. I'm a manager for a management consultant firm in Boulder. And I'm really looking forward to taking this group of kids to Japan.
Watarashiba Savannah, this. Konnichiwa. I am 15 years old and I'm a sophomore at Longmont High School. I did this program a couple of years ago to Mexico and couldn't pass up the opportunity again.
Hajimemashite. Watarashi wa onna Maya Haley desu. I'm Haley, and I go to Mead High School. And I'm 16 years old. I'm a sophomore. And I'm so excited for the new experiences and everything that Japan has to offer. So, thank you.
Hajimemashite, mina. My name is Kiara, and I'm 14 years old. I go to Flagstaff Academy. And I'm so excited to go to Japan because I'm very interested to see how their culture is vastly different from ours, as well as similarities. And I want to thank everyone here who was part of making this possible, because I'm just so happy.
Konnichiwa. Watarashi nonna Maya wa Genevieve desu. Hajimemashite. I am 13, and I'm eighth grade at Westview Middle School. And I'm really looking forward to the exchange, because I really want to spend time with my host family.
Konnichiwa. Watarashi no namae wa Michaela Witt. I'm 17. I'm currently a junior at Silver Peak High School. I personally am excited to go to Japan to meet new people and just immerse myself in a different culture. And I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity.
Konnichiwa. My name is Sophie Smith, and I'm a sophomore at Mead High School. And I'm 16 years old. And I'm so excited to go to Japan, because I, along with Savannah, I went to Mexico two years ago, and I had so much fun. And I can't wait to meet new friends in Japan as well. Thank you.
Konnichiwa. My name is Curtis Redden. I attend Nawa High School, and I'm a junior. I also went to Mexico with Sophie and Savannah. I am very excited to go to Japan, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, are there any questions of members of the council for us?
Just a comment, but I appreciate the work and effort of the volunteer chaperones that are going, because I know that it's a big time away from, you know, their lives. And I, you know, without people like that that can commit to helping these kids go on programs like this, you know, these things wouldn't happen. So I appreciate all the chaperones' efforts. Anybody else? Talk to member Levison.
Thank you. Mr. Safie, I attended the Sister Cities fundraising dinner for the Ed Green and Christian Green Scholarship Dinner. And what a wonderful event. Can you tell us a little bit about what we do in Longmont to make sure we have an equal and balanced exchange with our partners in Mexico and Japan?
Well, first of all, thank you for attending. There were two of you attending and supporting us. We get some money from the city as well as we do fundraising. And students, of course, do their own fundraising for that trip. We are in touch with both Mexico and Japan on a weekly basis through email. A few times, Mrs. Bagley in particular, has called several times on our behalf to Mexico City to talk to the mayor or other members of their city government. We have encouraged them to send us as many students as they want to. And this year, they have chosen to send eight students. So the difference here, that the city pays for their trip, while here, the students do fundraising for their trip. Any other questions?
Councilmember Kempkes.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys are gonna have fun. I've been to both cities. And those of you who've been to, at least Mexico, and those that are going to Japan, you're gonna have a really good time. In fact, I'm actually, although we don't do this at council, I'm actually posting your pictures on Facebook and tagging at least El Presidente José Luis Rosso right now, the ones that are going to Mexico, so he knows you're coming. Because I'm friends with him on Facebook. I'm not, unfortunately, I'm friends with the mayor of Chino, and I can never get his name right. But you're gonna have a good time, experience as much as you possibly can. You'll cry when you leave. And then when you bring your ambassadors back with you, you'll cry when they leave as well. So have a great time. Learn as much Spanish and Japanese as you possibly can, and you will. I was there in Mexico for all of 36 hours. And I know, you know, I do know some, as much Spanish as I possibly can, growing up, and, you know, growing up with my family. In the four days that I was in Japan, I learned quite a bit of Japanese. So good luck. You'll do fine. Don't be afraid of the food. You'll have a good time. Trust me. Have a marvelous trip. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kempkes.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Sam, I want to thank you personally for all the work that you do for Sister Cities and the Sister Cities Board as well. You guys put in a lot of hours, a lot of time. I've gotten to see it up close, being your liaison, and I really do appreciate all that you do. And also to the kids, have a good time.
Councilmember Finley, we also appreciate your effort on our behalf. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, your next item is the street's planned preliminary findings. Dale Radamaker, the Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, will be here to present.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. And that's sort of a tough act to follow. But I hope we all have a good time here tonight, too. So what staff is coming to present to you tonight are actually two items. The first item is the findings from our update of our street plan here in the city, which is a critical plan that feeds into not only the comprehensive plan, but also the multimodal plan in the city, which I believe we are looking to update both of those documents going forward. And this is one of those sort of critical infrastructure pieces in the overall city system that I really think we got to get right. We got to make sure that we have a transportation system that supports the vision and goals of our comprehensive plan. You can't have a transportation system, or actually, I should say, it's difficult to have a, you know, realize the vision of your comprehensive plan if your transportation system doesn't support it. And so I think what the staff and our consultants are going to talk with you a little bit about tonight is that very document. And I think one of the things to keep in mind is that the overall infrastructure of the city's transportation system is hundreds of millions of dollars. So even though the dollars look big here, which, by the way, they are, the overall systems that you're maintaining are also phenomenally large. I think if we, if we added all the lanes and everything talked about in here, it would add about 4% to the overall system of the city, because that reflects where Longmont is. We are a fairly mature city that's fairly well-built out in our planning area. And so what we're looking at now are those critical intersections and a few of the corridors that really need to have some capacity enhancements in order to move people around. So first, we're going to talk about that. And then Nick Wolfram is going to come up and talk to you a little bit about the street's sales tax, which is the essential funding mechanism that our community relies on to not only maintain our streets, but also to do some of these capacity improvements and safety improvements at the intersections. So we're going to talk to you about that. We did take these issues to the Longmont Transportation Advisory Board and our chair. Mr. Hillsman is here tonight as well. And so if you have any questions for TAB, he's probably more than happy to come down and talk about those. And we also have with us tonight, as you know, Nick Wolfram, our engineering manager, and Bob Ball, our traffic engineering administrator, as well as Carl Bulcules from Mueller Engineering. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Bob, and he'll start taking you through the findings from the city's street plan.
Good evening, council members. I'm Bob Ball, City Traffic Engineer. And I'll go through the first part of this and hand it off to Carl.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is there any way that we could get the center screen up so we don't have to look up, and we can just kind of look right at you?
It's nice to look at the wall screen.
Or, yeah, we'll start Netflix and just talk.
Just go through the slides, that's all.
I haven't seen The Godfather.
I haven't seen Frozen. Yes, a billion times. Thank you.
Send it to my house on Market Street.
I'm more than happy. I haven't seen The Secret Life of Walter Mitty yet.
I haven't either.
Welcome to Pelton.
You're making us think of all the movies we've watched.
Yeah.
And I'm tired of, if you want to build a snowman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bobby's working on it right now.
Should we just continue until it does come?
The better part comes later. I'll get going. Oh, it's up. Okay.
I want to build a snowman.
Okay. So we're going to talk a little bit about the street's plan update. What is this study? Well, it's a technical analysis of the street's system. It'll feed into the comprehensive plan and the multimodal plan update in the next year or two. So what we wanted to do beforehand was do a more detailed technical analysis. We looked at all the arterials, some of the more important collectors, but not most of them, just some of the collectors. And the main product is recommended improvements for the next 20 years, up to about the year 2035. And it will also produce some conceptual designs and cost estimates that can, again, feed into other studies. Like I said, it'll provide technical input for the comprehensive plan and the multimodal plan. And some of the other things it'll do is it'll feed into our capital improvement program and recommend projects that we'll be bringing to you every summer as we talk about the following year's capital improvement program. Federal and state funding opportunities. As Dr. Cog, we apply for federal monies or a C dot state projects, state monies. It's nice to have these things around, and we can pick the best projects to apply for different funding applications that'll score the best to get some federal and state funding. Nick will talk about how it feeds into the street fund sales tax extension. And finally, if we do an update to the, it can provide input to the update to the transportation community investment fee. Here's the major steps of the study. We started out by updating the Dr. Cog travel demand model, and we'll talk about that a little bit in a second. We evaluated various corridor and intersection improvements with the model and did some level of service analysis, capacity analysis. We scored with different criteria. And then we developed intersection concepts and cost estimates. We've been taken at the Transportation Advisory Board. I believe we talked about it about four times over the past year, presented to them at various stages. And just at the last meeting two or three weeks ago, they provided a recommendation to accept this. The Dr. Cog model, you've probably heard a little bit about from Phil or other people. It's a travel demand model for the whole Denver metropolitan area that the Denver Regional Council of Governments maintains and updates. It's currently a 2035 model. It always has to be 20 years out. Pretty soon, they'll start developing a 2040 model. But it's a 2035 model right now. They have land use forecasts, which is always the tricky part of modeling, is to try to forecast land use.
We do fundraising and students of course do their own fundraising for that trip. We are in touch with both Mexico and Japan on a weekly basis through email. A few times, Mrs. Bagley in particular, has called several times on our behalf to Mexico City to talk to the mayor or other members of their city government. We have encouraged them to send us as many students as they want to. And this year, they have chosen to send eight students. So, the difference here, that the city pays for their trip, while here, the students do fundraising for their trip. Any other questions?
Councilmember Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys are gonna have fun. I've been to both cities, and those of you who have been to at least Mexico and those that are going to Japan, you're gonna have a really good time. In fact, I'm actually, although we don't do this at council, I'm actually posting your pictures on Facebook and tagging at least El Presidente Jose Luis Orozco right now, the ones that are going to Mexico, so he knows you're coming. Because I'm friends with him on Facebook. I'm not unfortunately friends with the mayor of Chino, and I can never get his name right. But, you're gonna have a good time, experience as much as you possibly can. You'll cry when you leave, and then when you bring your investors back with you, you'll cry when they leave as well. So, have a great time, learn as much Spanish and Japanese as you possibly can, and you will. I was there in Mexico for all of thirty-six hours, and I know, you know, I do know some Span- as much Spanish as I possibly can, growing up, and, you know, growing up with my family. In the four days that I was in Japan, I learned quite a bit of Japanese, so, good luck. You'll do fine. Don't be afraid of the food. You'll have a good time, trust me. Have a marvelous trip. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Sam, I want to thank you personally for all the work that you do for Sister Cities and the Sister Cities Board as well. You guys put in a lot of hours, a lot of time. I've gotten to see it up close, being your liaison, and I really do appreciate all that you do. And, also to the kids, have a good time.
Councilmember Fendy, we also appreciate your effort on our behalf. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, your next item is the streets plan preliminary findings. Dale Radamaker, the Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, will be here to present.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, and that's sort of a tough act to follow, but I hope we all have a good time here tonight, too. So what staff is coming to present to you tonight are actually two items. The first item is the findings from our update of our street plan here in the city, which is a critical plan that feeds into not only the comprehensive plan, but also the multimodal plan in the city, which I believe we are looking to update both of those documents going forward. And this is one of those sort of critical infrastructure pieces in the overall city system that I really think we got to get right. We got to make sure that we have a transportation system that supports the vision and goals of our comprehensive plan. You can't have a transportation system, or actually, I should say, it's difficult to have a, you know, realize the vision of your comprehensive plan if your transportation system doesn't support it. And so, I think what the staff and our consultants are going to talk with you a little bit about tonight is, is that very document. And I think one of the things to keep in mind is that the overall infrastructure of the city's transportation system is hundreds of millions of dollars. So even though the dollars look big here, which by the way, they are, the overall systems that you're maintaining are also phenomenally large. I think if we, if we added all the lanes and everything talked about in here, it would add about four percent to the overall system of the city. Because that reflects where Longmont is. We are a fairly mature city, that's fairly well built out in our planning area. And so what we're looking at now are those critical intersections and a few of the corridors that really need to have some capacity enhancements in order to move people around. So first, we're going to talk about that, and then, and then Nick Wolfram is going to come up and talk, talk to you a little bit about the streets sales tax, which is the essential funding mechanism that our community relies on to not only maintain our streets, but also to do some of these capacity improvements and safety improvements at the intersections. So we're going to talk to you about that. We did take these issues to the Longmont Transportation Advisory Board and our chair. Mr. Hilsman is here tonight as well, and so if you have any questions for TAB, he's probably more than happy to come down and talk about those. And we also have with us tonight, as you know, Nick Wolfram, our engineering manager, and Bob Ball, our, our traffic engineering administrator, as well as Carl Buckholz from Muller Engineering. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Bob, and he'll start taking you through the findings from the city's street plan.
I'm Bob Ball, City Traffic Engineer, and I'll, I'm going to go through the first part of this and hand it off to Carl.
Um, Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is there any way that we could get the center screen up, so we don't have to look up, and we can just kind of look right at you?
It's nice to look at Wall Street.
Or, yeah, or start Netflix and just talk.
Just go through the slides, that's all.
I haven't seen The Godfather.
I haven't seen Frozen.
Yes, a billion times, thank you.
Send it to my house on Market Street.
He's more than happy.
I haven't seen The Secret Life of Walter Mitty yet.
I haven't either.
Welcome to town.
You're making us think of all the movies we've watched.
And I'm tired of, you want to build a snowman.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's working on it right now.
Should we just continue until it does come?
The better part comes later. I'll get going. Oh, it's up, okay.
I want to build a snowman.
Okay. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the streets plan update. What is this study? Well, it's a technical analysis of the streets system. We, it'll feed into the comprehensive plan and the multimodal plan update in the next year or two. So what we wanted to do beforehand was, was do a more detailed technical analysis. We looked at all the arterials, some of the more important collectors, but not most of them, just some of the collectors. And the main product is recommended improvements for the next twenty years, up to about the year 2035. And it will also produce some conceptual designs and cost estimates that can, again, feed into other studies. Like I said, it'll provide technical input for the comprehensive plan and the multimodal And some of the other things it'll do is it'll, it'll feed into our capital improvement program and recommend projects that we'll be bringing to you every summer as we talk about the following year's capital improvement program. Federal and state funding opportunities. As Dr. Cog, we apply for federal monies, or we see dot state projects, state monies. It's nice to have these things around, and we can pick the best projects to apply for different funding applications that'll score the best to get some federal and state funding. Nick will talk about how it feeds into the street fund sales tax extension. And finally, if we do an update to the, it can provide input to the, update to the transportation community investment fee. Here's the major steps of the study. We started out by updating the Dr. Cog travel demand model, and we'll talk about that a little bit in a second. We evaluated various corridor and intersection improvements with the model and did some level of service analysis, capacity analysis. We scored with different criteria. And then we developed intersection concepts and cost estimates. We've been taken at the Transportation Advisory Board. I believe we talked about it about four times over the past year, presented to them at various stages, and just at the last meeting two or three weeks ago, they provided a recommendation to accept this. The Dr. Cog model, you've probably heard a little bit about from Phil or other people. It's a travel demand model for the whole Denver metropolitan area that the Denver Regional Council of Governments maintains and updates. It's currently a 2035 model. It always has to be twenty years out. Pretty soon, they'll, they'll start developing a 2040 model. But it's a 2035 model right now. They have land use forecasts, which is always the tricky part of modeling, is to try to forecast land use, which is, it's a challenging effort. But we updated the land use forecast for, for the Longmont area, and as a little summary, our best estimate is that residential land use will grow about twenty-two, twenty-three percent, and employment about eleven or twelve percent. We validate the model to existing traffic counts, which was 2010 counts, and then we get traffic forecasts, and we, we did about ten alternatives evaluations. We've run the model several times, we improve this street, improve that street, and see what it does to the whole network, and that's the basis of selecting the preferred alternatives. So now I'm going to turn it over to Carl, and he'll go through, Carl Muller, or Carl, Carl Buckholz from Muller Engineering. He did the, he was a project manager for Muller, and, and he's, he's going to explain the rest of the study findings.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I want to talk briefly about the evaluation criteria that we used to help prioritize the improvements, and then also briefly describe the different corridor projects and intersection projects that we came forward with to recommend here. So we, we developed five evaluation criteria that reflect what was important from a transportation system and a community perspective. Those are both kind of quantitative measures as well as qualitative measures. One of the first evaluation criteria that we looked at was to improve near-term traffic congestion, really to try to move, improve the mobility of the transportation system throughout the city, and it addressed those bottleneck areas. We also felt that safety was pretty important to the city. The city maintains a very thorough accident database, so we had the benefit of being able to look throughout the transportation system and seeing where there are accident problems and patterns that need to be addressed. So that was another part of the evaluation criteria in developing our projects. And then we also considered multimodal transportation. What are the areas that we could, that different improvements could address? Bicycle, pedestrian, transit improvements. For instance, where we, could we complete a missing sidewalk link, or put in a bike lane as part of the improvement? And then, we also want to take a broader look and look at the overall system and tied it to economic development. So, are there locations that we're improving and adding missing links that might help from a redevelopment or development location in the city? And so that was a fourth evaluation criteria. And then finally, the fifth evaluation criteria was ease of implementation. How difficult is it to implement and build a project? Are there hurdles from an environmental standpoint, a right-of-way standpoint, or from just a constructability standpoint? So that was another evaluation criteria that we developed. So, as Bob mentioned, we, we used the model that, that was developed to look at many improvements throughout the city, and we broke them into corridor as well as intersection improvements. I'm going to first talk about the corridor improvements, and I know this is a little bit hard to see on the slide, but hopefully, I think you may also have handouts in your council packet. But just to walk you through this a little bit, this slide shows-
Real quick, Bob, why don't you just orient them on the map with the mouse?
Yeah, along the top, along the top is State- Along the top is State Highway 66. State Highway 119 or Ken Pratt Boulevard runs through here, east-west through the middle. Main Street is north-south, here in the middle. Ninth Avenue, Seventeenth Avenue. County Line Road is here, and Pace Street is here.
So, and I'll pop out some of the higher priority projects that we'll show in a little bit more detail. But, working our way kind of down the legend a little bit in terms of identifying these projects, the purple lines you see up there are really corridors that we're recommending widening from two lanes to four lanes. And those include corridors like State Highway 66, essentially from the western city limits all the way to the eastern city limits and on to I-25. Also, Pace Street, north-south is a key improvement that is recommended to be widened to four lanes up to Seventeenth Avenue, as well as County Line Road from Ninth Avenue up to State Highway 66. And then finally, towards the southern end of the city, Nelson Street on the, on the west side would also get widened from two lanes to four lanes, as would Clover Basin Drive. And then on the far south end, Pike Road, from Hoover Street to Main Street, would be widened from two lanes to four lanes. And then 119th Street, south of Ken Pratt Boulevard, is the other widening project. We have, one of, as you know, the primary east-west backbone corridor in the city is Ken Pratt Boulevard, State Highway 19. That corridor, we're recommending improving from four lanes to six lanes from its junction at Nelson all the way to the east. And then the other key six-lane widening project in the city would be Hoover from the diagonal up to Boston Avenue. And so, those are all pretty critical backbone improvements through the city. The city is also currently making some improvements, and that includes at the intersection of Main and Ken Pratt Boulevard. And so, Ken Pratt Boulevard will be widened to six lanes from Pratt Parkway just to the east of Main Street. That's part of that project, and I believe that's starting this, this year. A few other improvements, working our way down with the dash lines that you see on the map, are where we're adding connections, missing links that aren't there today. And a couple key ones that were not in the comp plan that are important to point out are the Pace Street connection from Ken Pratt Boulevard up to Third Avenue, that connection, as well as extending Ninth Avenue and realigning it to match in with Hoover County Road 26. And, also, the other connection is Boston Avenue through the railroad, across the railroad, I should say, over to Price Street is a missing link that would help from a connectivity standpoint. That's probably the main things I want to touch on. Most of these projects, as I think it was mentioned earlier, are already in the comp plan, except for the Pace Street connection and the, and the Hoover County Road nine, or the Hoover County Road 26 to Ninth Avenue connection. So we weren't really reinventing the wheels so much, it was more to validate and prioritize. There are some improvements, some of the blue dash lines are locations that are more developer-driven, that would be built. And then, finally, the last set of improvements, or set of roadways identified, are those that we have looked at that were identified in the comp plan to be widened, and we didn't feel that there was a really prioritized need to widen those in the foreseeable future. However, we, we think it's important that right-of-way continues to be preserved in case a widening need occurs at some point beyond the foreseeable future. So, that's a quick overview of, hopefully, quick, of those improvements. And then, on the next slide is the evaluation matrix that we had worked with the city on to identify and help us prioritize the improvements. And I'm not going to go through this in detail. We essentially looked at each of the valuation criteria against the different twenty-four projects, and we came up with a scoring system. Just of note, two of the higher scored projects that popped out were Ken Pratt Boulevard from Nelson to Pratt Parkway, scored very well, and you'll see that as one of the recommended projects, as well as Hoover Road from 119 to Nelson Road. So, and just kind of highlighting some of the improvements that are recommended for the near term are Ken Pratt Boulevard, as I mentioned, from Nelson to Main Street. Also, Hoover from, from Nelson up to Boston, and then, excuse me, Hoover from the diagonal up to Nelson. And then finally, Nelson west from Grandview Meadows over to Dry Creek Drive is the fourth project. So all four of those projects are recommended as being higher priority than the others because of the evaluation that was conducted for that. And then, in terms of the cost of those improvements, we also developed cost estimates. The total cost of all those improvements works out to be $142 million. However, the city portion of that is about $86 million, because several of those roadways, as you know, are state highways. Some of the improvements we looked at are beyond the city limits, so those would not be city costs, obviously. And then the near-term need in terms of those four projects that I just mentioned, those would cost about slightly less than $11 million. And then, moving to the intersection projects, there were twelve, fourteen intersections that we identified. We did a cross-the-board look of all the primary intersections in the city. We looked at develop improvements. We drew up conceptual plans for improving fourteen of these intersections, and we rated them in a very similar manner that we rated the corridors, using the same criteria. We looked at things like the level of service, which is an indication of the congestion, the cost of the intersections, as well as how much capacity we would be adding into the system as those, as part of those improvements. Quickly, this is the evaluation criteria that we had developed. A few of the intersections that rose to the top, probably no surprise, would be the Hoover Street diagonal intersection came out as the number-one need. It's also a fairly high cost, but definitely there's a lot of need there. In addition to that intersection, there are four others that jumped out. Nelson and Hoover Street is a primary intersection that needs improvement. Also, up on the north end of town, Pace and State Highway 66, we're seeing a lot of growth up there, and there's, it's a fairly minor intersection in terms of its capacity, and so there's a need to improve that as well. And then out on the east end of town, where a lot of the mobility is trying to move towards I-25, County Road and 119 is another intersection that we've identified for improvements. And then also, County Road in Zlaton, which is just to the east there. So, overall, the total intersections of the fourteen that we identified, it's a total of $42 million of improvements. About a little less than $13 million of that would be city street improvements. The near-term need, those five intersections I just identified, is about $22.4 million. So, that's a quick overview, and I, I know I went through a lot of information pretty quick, and there's a lot of information in your handout, but at this time, I think we're open for any questions you may have, or comments, certainly.
Isn't State Highway 119 and Main Street? I mean, that intersection always seems to be pretty congested, particularly if you're coming down Main Street, trying to make that left turn, it's always backed up several lights.
Right. So, we, so the city is making some improvements to that intersection this year and next year. But in addition to that, we had identified putting in dual-left turn lanes, north-south at that location. So, that is a needed improvement. It just didn't rise to the surface as the other four did, because the city is already making more interim improvements there. But you're right, that's a needed improvement. Nick or Bob, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, the initial phase, and actually, we have a public input meeting right outside council chambers tomorrow evening at 6:30, for several of these projects that are going to be coming up. And that intersection project is one of them. We received a great deal of state and federal funding for that project because we had the local match, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But that project at the intersection of Ken Pratt and Main, and the intersection of South Pratt and Main, that'll tie those two together, is scheduled to start later this summer, with some initial work of installation of a box culvert along Dry Creek on the south side of 119, and then it'll continue on with some widening. So, there's going to be quite a bit of construction down there, and it will impact traffic, and we'll, we'll try and phase that as best we can. But that's why we're getting out and starting to do some public input on this now.
Councilmember Sanders.
Thank you. I just wanted to know a little bit more about the, the weighting system that you use, because when I'm looking at the Table 1, it doesn't seem like anything drops below a score of 34, which is the first, the first project. And then on the intersection, the first project is Main to 119 on Pike Road. And then on the other chart with the weighted intersections, sorry, I'm clicking through here, it seems like they're all, I think the minimum score there is 43. So, is that just because we eliminated everything that would be too low-scoring and didn't bother factoring it in? Or, and if we really want to look at the extraordinary amount of need compared with the extraordinarily small amount of resources, is there a cutoff that you, you, as a professional engineering planner, do you kind of say, well, you know, you want to look at ones that have, and, and I guess it all depends on what you use as your weighting factors? Maybe something, the most critic, addressing the most critical needs first, and then looking at the others that are, you know, maybe a little bit next to the greatest need, because the highest one, I think, that you scored on the intersection is 119 and Hoover, which is a 73. And, I don't know how often you reevaluate, because I don't know if you took into consideration, you know, a new mall development there, and you, you don't know now what the traffic floor will be in the future. So, I understand addressing that perhaps first, but will we know that it has additional capacity?
Yeah. So, what we did, as Bob mentioned earlier, we had a, a model of the city that we used to forecast 2035 traffic volume. So, all of the analysis was based on future traffic, and, and it assumed different land use improvements, like redevelopment of the mall and the other things that would occur. And so those were taken into account. And then, we really started off with the comp plan improvements from a corridor standpoint, and said, okay, these are locations that we need to look at and see, okay, are they still right improvements to make? And for the most part, we confirmed that. There were a few, few differences. But then we also looked and said, we, we ended up getting a map of the city that had what's called the volume-capacity ratio of each link of roadway. And so based on that information, we could see that the volume-capacity ratio is above one, that's a problem. If it's, you know, close to one, it's kind of a problem as well. If it's far below, then it's not. So we, we looked around to see where we might have problems, and if there were, then we added that to our evaluation. So there were a lot of roadways that fell off the, kind of what I would call maybe the first screening, because they, they did not have a congestion problem in, in year 2035. Same thing with the intersections. The city has a master model of all of the signalized intersections in the city. And so we took the information, and we, we grew the traffic to year 2035. We looked at the intersections throughout the city to see where we might have problems. We did focus somewhat on near-term congestion in the evaluation, because, just because something's a problem in 2035, doesn't mean that's where the city should be spending their money in the near term. So we gave a little bit more emphasis to the near-term congestion. But we did take a look at really all the signalized intersections. We didn't apply this whole evaluation process to all those intersections, but we looked at all of them to see if any of them had a congestion problem, and, or a safety problem. And if they did, they kind of went onto the list, and then we said, okay, these are problems, what can we do about them? And we looked at different, you know, can we add a left-turn lane? Can we add a right-turn lane? Can we make other improvements that will help reduce congestion or improve safety? And that all whittled down to these fourteen intersections, and that's what we applied the evaluation criteria to, to then come up with the five intersections that we're recommending for the near term. So it was kind of a, a multi-tiered process to get to that point. Does that answer your question, or?
Yeah, I think Nick wants to weigh in, too.
If I could, just one thing, because that's, that's a very good question, and, and that's the purpose of a, of a master plan, whether it's in transportation, or water, or sewer, or any other utility. It is a plan. We had to make assumptions on traffic growth through this, and in twenty years, the only thing I'll bet on is that we won't be exactly right. You know, and so that is the importance-
Well, you're failing to meet my expectations, Nick.
You know, in twenty years, that's a lot of, that's, that's a, that's a longer period of time, and so we'll need to do that. But the good thing about having this tool updated is it is something then that we need to continue to look at and continue to maintain updating as, as, as time goes on, to, to correct it at various stages along that route.
Well, and I guess the other evaluation criteria, I want to know if you factored in, and I know this is, you know, the subject that shall not be brought up, but fast tracks, you know, when you're looking at the evaluation criteria for downtown, and where the railroad tracks would cross, having additional- tracks would cross, having additional stops, are people going to find a way to circumvent? I mean, I'm talking about an optimistic view that, and I can hear the snickers in the room, but to optimistically think that around, you know, 2035, we're going to have commuter rail rolling through the city. And so have we taken a look at other traffic impacts and backups?
One of the good things about commuter rail compared to freight rail, and we've looked at this all along, since we started the planning process years ago with RTD, is that the stops for commuter rail, as you see in Denver, are very short. It's like a normal light cycle. It's not that three or four-minute-long duration. It's a short train that goes by in less than a minute. And so the impacts of commuter rail really on arterial corridor traffic, even with increased rates, is not going to be what we believe to be significant. And I think that stands with what they've found in areas in Denver where it has already been installed.
And similarly, when we see the increase in rail because of rising fuel costs, have we factored in that to the traffic patterns, too, when we might have the potential? Like, when we saw fuel costs go up, we saw many, many more very, very long trains. So I don't know whether, how dynamic your model is, and I'm just going to, I know you can't answer that. Then one other question. I also wonder how Weld County Road 26 met the criteria, because there's nothing out there except Union Reservoir. And the city doesn't have any potential, you know, development in that segment. And Weld County Road 26 out past County Line Road 1.
And in that area, what we're looking towards, and we look a lot, not only in Longmont per se, but in the surrounding areas. And we worked years ago with Weld County, because right now, 26 comes in, not at Ninth Avenue with the signalized intersection, but down at the local access intersection. Dearwood, thank you. And if that, if any of that area develops further to the east on Firestone or in the county, and you see an increased traffic volume on 26, that's when we would want to realign that intersection to meet up at Ninth Avenue, rather than having it come in at a local intersection at a point where we don't want another traffic signal on that. So that's been something that we've had planned for very long. It's actually on Weld County's transportation plan. Since Longmont didn't go out and do detailed planning out there in that area, and we'll probably be looking at that in the comp plan update, but that'd be just a catch-up. But that'll be dependent upon really what happens to the east of Longmont.
Well, and wouldn't we, as a transportation issue, wouldn't you want to plan to shuttle people to 119 where there's the capacity in the roadway as opposed to, you know, us expending resources to enable traffic coming from, you know, other outside entities coming in to the city when we're going to want to, you know, pay the bulk of that, doing the high-volume stuff?
And that's why Fairview and other streets are looked to be connected down into in Weld's plan for that. And we've worked with them on those issues to make sure that you have that. But there will be a certain amount of traffic that's going to be attracted into Core Longmont. So yes, we want to make sure that they make connections both to 119, also north to Highway 66, that serve that area very well. And we jointly worked several years ago with Weld County and other communities on that transportation plan for that area.
And I also appreciate your notation, because I wrote it on the bottom of my notepad here, that while you have recommendations for 119 and Highway 66, you recognize they're outside of our jurisdiction and have not included that in the budget. However, is there a way that you can get us the information on, you know, we already have those corridor plans kind of hammered out that we talk about every couple of years with CDOT and all the other partners? So, you know, just putting that into the parking lot, not the parking lot, but, you know, putting that in a status where you keep updating on that, I just appreciate that to know how that fits into the bigger picture of what we might want to contribute to those other widening projects.
And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to include those in this plan, so that as we work with our partners, with Dr. Cog, with Weld County, with other communities out there, that we need to look towards those connection roadways that do serve Longmont and are critical for us.
I've got a question about the Hoover Road widening from, basically from Rogers Road down to C-HI-119. I don't understand why we can't have a 24-inch bike lane on that section, because it's really difficult to get from the northeast part of the city. If I want to get down to Highway 52, you know, you almost have to go to Nywha and pick it up there, because there's no safe way. It seems like, how expensive can it be to paint a piece of white stripe on a road? You don't need much. I mean, that's plenty wide for a bike to go on. As long as you're spending that money to widen that lane, why can't we have a bike lane?
Well, we'll be doing somewhat widening. Actually, on that stretch of Hoover Road, a lot of that widening already exists, because you already have existing turn lanes. And so it's a matter of connecting those dots and making those turn lanes into not just turn lanes, but through lanes. The widening of Hoover, Hoover Road basically is 12-foot lanes, which are a minimum. And so to steal that from the width is going to narrow it down. What we have focused in on the past more is trying to make better, some of the better connections out towards Airport Road, where then you can use Airport Road as a good corridor down there. One of the ones we look on and notice, for example, is Ninth Avenue, and we've said, we don't need to widen Ninth Avenue to four lanes, but what we do need to do on Ninth Avenue, I believe, is to make that a good, to widen out those shoulders so that we've got a good connection of bicycle access out to Airport Road, and try and focus on some of those others. The next update that we will do, as we work with the comprehensive plan, is the multimodal plan, and we'll be looking more at some of those alternatives for those also. But it's a matter of cost, safety, and what we can try and accomplish on those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'll try to keep it short. The questions I have, the first one's around the cost estimates, and what's the value of the dollar, what year, and how much inflation factor do we put into this?
Yeah, that is a good question. So it is current-year cost estimates that it's based on, so it's not inflated out to future years. It's based on today's dollars. The basis for that is generally other city projects that have been done in the past, and also the Colorado Department of Transportation keeps a good database of construction cost projects. So using that information, all the cost dollars are in today's dollars.
If I can jump in, part of the answer to your question, too, is the escalation also comes in in the CIP. So that's where that conversation occurs.
Okay. And I have to say, I really can't disagree with you on the pain points I feel on these intersections. Four lights to get across Main Street on 119, for example. One of the concerns that I would have are, you looked at signalized crossing or intersections, is that correct?
Yes, primarily signalized intersections, yeah.
As of today, I can tell you that Nelson Road and Airport Road is somewhat time of day, but there are times I have to wait 10 or 15 minutes to be able to make a left turn into that neighborhood there. And so is there consideration for additional signalization or traffic controls that would allow left turns into intersections that are near those major signaled intersections?
Yeah. That wasn't something that we had looked at as part of the scope of this study in terms of adding other signalized locations. We were really focused on more the major intersections, arterial arterial intersections primarily. So it just wasn't, because we were identifying more major projects that might be done as part of the city's transportation sales tax or the CIP, it was more the major arterial intersection, rather than, say, more a local street and arterial intersection. Not to say that there's not a need there, it just wasn't something we looked at as part of the study.
So there could be additional requirements beyond, say, you fix the intersection, people start using the roadway more, you have more traffic, and you create a bigger problem for residents that live in those areas. Is that what I'm hearing?
And that's one of the reasons why we look at those every year. We do several things. Every year, we do a high-crash location. We keep track of all accident data that comes in from the police department and look at each intersection through the city to determine where we're seeing perhaps, not perhaps, where we're seeing more accidents than you would anticipate at a normal level for that volume of traffic. We keep a look at those and look at those versus signal warrants, and that's where we've added several signals. We also take an annual look or regular look at various signal intersections. You're talking about Airport Road and Nelson Road, and is there the need to put in a left turn arrow? And as changes occur and development occurs in areas and traffic patterns change, that is one of the things that we need to look at on a regular basis, and we are and do, to see what changes to signal timing or what changes to the signal operations can be done to help improve traffic flow at intersections.
Yeah, I wouldn't advocate putting signals a block apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that's way beyond me, so at this point, you just kind of pray and hope that, you know, as it is in Penn State, we will all hope that you're as good as you think you are, or we all hope you are, whatever that line was. But at this time, we can still debate, questions, et cetera, but I'd like to go ahead and move. We accept the Streets' master plan and go with option one.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, your next item will also be introduced by Dale Rattamaker with Public Works and Natural Resources. He'll be presenting the potential extension of the existing 3/4% street fund, sales, and use tax.
Easier said than done. So actually, this is real quick. I'm going to just introduce Nick Wolfram. He's going to go through the plan. I am still Dale Rattamaker, but I don't think I need to do much more introduction. Nick's ready to talk to you about it.
Good evening, members of council. Nick Wolfram, the Engineering Services Manager with Public Works and Natural Resources. We're going to take a look at the street fund sales tax, and we're going to look a little bit at the background, how it's currently being used, funding sources for the overall street fund, what's needed in the future. And then we're going to look at four specific issues that we discussed with the Transportation Advisory Board that relate to a potential extension of the street fund sales tax, and we'll be asking for council direction on those. Start with, originally approved by, the street fund sales tax was originally approved by voters, Longmont voters in 1986. It was established as a funding source for maintenance and improvements to the city's street and transportation system. And those of you that were in the community prior to '86 and, say, '85 and before that might recall what the condition of city streets in Longmont was, and it was very poor. It was a major concern. It was originally put forth to the voters in a five-year increment, and that wasn't because it was only needed for five years, but it was a new tax, and we put it forward to show them what could be done with that funding source and allow for review on a five-year period. It was extended in 1990, 1994, 2000, 2005, and again in 2009 for the existing period that ends daylights on, sunsets, not daylight, sunsets on December 31st, 2016. Wrong way. The purpose of it is pretty clear-cut. There are about four different program areas. The first focus of the street fund sales and use tax has always been safely operate and efficiently maintain the existing system. And so maintenance is the in-house work that we do for snow plowing, street sweeping, maintenance of signs, stripings, and signals, pothole patching, and regular general street patching. The street rehabilitation program is the core of our asset management program for the over 320 miles of streets in the city's system. This is largely the contracted work that focuses on preventive maintenance, such as crack ceiling and seal coats, and major rehabilitation, as concrete repair, pavement management, and reconstruction. We've had a transportation system management, or TSM, program that is on the improvement side of the system, and it addresses safety, individual safety projects, minor capacity improvements, the city's school safety program, neighborhood traffic calming, and also pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And lastly, capital improvements program, which have traditionally been larger projects focused on improvement of mobility and safety in the community. Basically, any improvement that you've seen in the city's street and transportation system in the last 28 years has been made possible because of 3/4% street fund, sales, and use tax. The funding has allowed us to bring in tens of millions, I didn't go all the way back and start adding it up, but many tens of millions in state and federal funds over that time. Projects such as the State Highway 119, Ken Pratt Boulevard extension would not have been possible without us having the local match to go out and bring in $10 million to get that project built. The city has leveraged our local funds in getting state and federal funds to come in and help us improve our system. So how is it currently being used? We have several projects that are currently ongoing. We're in the six, five-year increment, and as we said, that expires in a few years, but we've been working on design and having to do some of the front-end work and accumulate funds to do these projects. Right now, under construction, we have the State Highway 119 box culvert and pedestrian underpass out east of town. That actually is two purposes. It's allowing the 100-year storm flows from Dry Creek to pass through or under State Highway 119 and protect that roadway from either being washed out or severely damaged in the case of a flood. It'll also serve as a pedestrian underpass. And in conjunction with that project, we're putting a sidewalk along the north side of Highway 119 from Third Avenue out there that'll allow another access to get out to, off street, to get out to Sandstone Ranch. And particularly with the greenway being damaged by the flood for the period, that'll be a great new access for that. We have two other pedestrian underpasses we're working on, one at Hoover Street at Dry Creek, and that is, we're working on that one in conjunction with the mall development to expand that box culvert for a pedestrian underpass. That might start later this year, but we're actually working with the mall development plans to see how that could best fit in. But that will create new access across Hoover Road, also a 119 pedestrian underpass on 119, south of the Hoover Street intersection. Both of those last two, Dr. Cog funds that are made possible by our local match funds. We've talked a little bit already this evening about Ken Pratt and Main intersection improvements, and the Ken Pratt and South Pratt Parkway intersection improvements. That will in essence create a six-lane section that will allow a lot more traffic to get through in the same amount of green time, and then will free up. We're also doing some north-south improvements. This is the first phase of improvements to that intersection. It won't be adding those dual-left turn lanes, and somebody already brought up the fact that that's bad. But with that additional capacity through the intersection, we can then give more capacity, more green time to those turning movements, and you'll see some significant improvements at that intersection. State Highway 66 and County Line Road intersection improvements is a project we started last year. We actually put it on hold after the flood, because Highway 119 was closed, and we didn't want any more work up there holding up the traffic on Highway 66, since that was our only connection to I-25. So that one's getting started again. Turn lanes at that intersection that are going to create some improvements, both to safety and capacity in the intersection. Both of those projects that are receiving state and federal funds because of our local taxes. Two bridge projects, the Main Street and South Pratt Parkway Bridge replacements over St. Vrain Creek. Those are both under design right now. The Main Street Bridge is going to be the first one to kick off, and we hope to be starting that later this year, sometime around the end of the year. Those projects will increase the capacity of both of those bridges to pass the 100-year storms. Because of our local match, we're receiving $3 million in FEMA dollars to help with the replacement of those two bridges. We also have a Main Street project to replace the deteriorating asphalt pavement between Ken Pratt Boulevard and Third Avenue with a new concrete, long-lasting concrete pavement. So there's kind of a really real focus in that lower downtown area. And like I said, we have a public meeting tomorrow evening that we're going to be hosting an open house on some of those projects. The third one there is Boston Avenue from Main to Martin that will be constructed in So if we start to look at the money side of things, the 2014 budget projects over $21.5 million in revenues coming into the street fund. $21.5 million in revenues coming into the street fund. Of those, 55% are from the three-quarters cent street fund sales and use tax. Automobile tax, which is registration fees, account for another 5%, State Highway Use Tax, which is based on gas tax money that we get back from the state, 12%, federal and state grants, 23%, amounts to about $4.7 million, something like that, in 2014, and other is 5%. So you can see the street fund sales tax is a significant portion. However, if we take out those one-time funds of state and federal grants, we're left with about $17 million of ongoing revenues, and the street fund sales tax is 72% of that. So 75 cents on every dollar that we spend on maintenance or improvements to the system comes out of that. Automobile tax, 6%, Highway Use Tax, 16%, and others at 6%. So, when we look at the total sales tax paid in Longmont, it's 8.075%. That all doesn't come to Longmont. Longmont actually gets less than half of that. The state gets 2.9%, RTD gets 1%, the Science and Cultural Facilities District gets .1%, Boulder County gets .8%, the City of Longmont gets 3.275%. Of that 3.275% that does come to the city, the general fund and the public improvement fund split 2%, public safety gets .325%, open space is .2%, and three-quarters of a cent on the dollar comes to the street fund. So this table looks at city sales and use tax rates in other communities along the front range, and you can see we're second from the bottom, Broomfield, Northland, Fort Collins, Westminster, Brighton, Thornton, Denver, Boulder, Lafayette, Louisville, Arbada, and Greeley are all higher than our 3.275%. Deconah, Firestone, Lakewood, Loveland, and Lyons are below that, and I would point out that that 3.275% includes the three-quarters cent street fund sales and use tax. I would also point out that in Loveland, Centerra is actually 4%, and that's somehow related to that development, and Jim Golden or someone would have to better explain that to me, he gave me this information. So, what's needed in the future? It's really no different than what we've had the last 28 years. First and foremost, ongoing maintenance operations, asset management, street sidewalk system rehabilitation, protection and continued updating and renewal of that 320 miles of streets that we have. TSM, safety, pedestrian, bicycle, school safety programs, capital improvements. We just saw a presentation about the need for some of those build-out improvements of arterial street system, and we're also going to talk a little bit about some needed bridge improvements. When we talk about a potential extension, the Transportation Advisory Board has been working with us on this, and we've looked at several issues. Based on the belief that maintenance and improvements to the street system, the city's street and transportation system is critical to the community, and that this funding source is critical to providing that service, we've focused on four primary areas, and we're going to go through those right now, and the TAB's recommendations are, and we're asking for council direction on those four. So we'll start with how much? Should an extension be for the same amount? Staff believes that the existing source of revenue, the three-quarters cent, has served the community well, and looking at future projections, staff believes that it will provide the necessary funds for continuing to maintain and improve the systems, at least in the midterm. This is an amount that the community has supported in the past, and an extension in that same amount would not result in an increase in taxes or in Longmont's sales and use tax. The Transportation Advisory Board recommended the council move forward with an extension of the same three-quarters cent street fund sales and use tax, and that would be the first question that we'd like to discuss with council.
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, when you took this to TAB, did you give them other options? Like, I know you're going to ask us to vote on these, and I just want to know whether or not other options were thrown out, for example, you know, 1% for five years, and then, you know, looking at keeping the five-year term, and then maybe doing 1% of keeping it at three-quarters, as opposed to the next question is putting it to a 10-year period. The other thing is, I always like to know this, how many taxes are we going to have people voting on in every cycle? And people get tax fatigue, and I know that our chances of getting the street tax renewed might actually be better on a five-year cycle because people like to be checked in with, this being Colorado. And then, so did you ever look at all those different dynamics? And then with Councilmember Moore's question about inflation, how do, I want to know how the 10-year would fit into some inflationary pressures we may not know of in the future? And I know we can always decide if we need to change it and go back to the voters, but I think since people are used to the five-year cycle, it's been a pretty good win for us.
Well, let's start with the first part. We did not specifically look, we didn't discuss a lot at different rates. As far as the three-quarters cent sales and use tax, one of the things about that as a sales tax is, and you all know this from evaluating and we get regular reports from finance, when the economy's improved, our sales taxes have gone up, and what we've seen generally, when our economy was depressed, we were actually seeing lower costs from contractors, and so it kind of paralleled with that a little bit. Now that it's going up, we are seeing higher construction costs coming in, but what we've seen generally is a parallel of that, those costs versus the benefit of what we can get from that. So no, we did not look significantly at a different rate as far as that goes.
Well, I'd just like to make an observation. This winter, when we had those heavy snows and the cold weather and the frozen ice on the roads, I mean, people really complained about, you know, the roadway. So anything we can do to help maintain the roads and, you know, because that helps in our pothole situation, and I think we just have a total mutiny if we didn't do everything we can to maintain our roads, particularly in the wintertime and make them safe. So I'm personally going to support the three-quarters percent tax. I think it's a great tax. I think it's money well spent, and without it, you don't get the matching money that the state and federal, so if you don't have that seed money to get the matching money, then we're giving away that 24% that's free picking to help us with our road maintenance. So I'm definitely going to support it.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just real quick, taxes suck. Going to the ballot with anything more than what the experts are recommending, I think, would be foolish. I also think that if three-quarters is what we've asked for and we've gotten in the past, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I know we're not there yet, but just to save it on time, I'd be concerned also, just like with Councilmember Levison, that if it's worked at five years for the last 30, then whoa, I just, we need this, you know? So if we don't have money to maintain our streets or do what we voted on just a few minutes ago, that wouldn't be good. So if it's worked, why not just keep doing it five years, three-quarters cents, and let the voters hold us accountable in five years if staff screws up? So.
The next item we're going to talk about, or one of the later items.
I'm just saving time. I'm just saving time. I'm for five, three-quarters.
I'd like to explain a little bit of the pros and cons of that.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, jumping a little ahead. Taxes aren't always the greatest to pay, but the three-quarters cent has always done well with us. When I first got on council, I was always wondering why, so I'll jump ahead, as others have already. I always wondered why we were at five, five years, and I asked staff, and well, that's how it's been done, but it's always been difficult to plan, you know, a five-year increment. We can't budgets or plan past five years, so it's very difficult to get funding from the state showing a five-year CIP. If we can show a 10-year, it's easier to show, you know, a funding source that is a 10-year instead of a five-year. In fact, when I first got on council, I was appointed to the Transportation Advisory Board, and even at that time polling showed that, yes, at five years it passed, yeah, 10 years it passed. So I'm fine with three-quarters of a cent. So, I mean, do we need a motion to go, to jump this hurdle first?
That's what we can do, if you want to do that, if you would rather, I can go through all four of these issues.
No, then I move that we continue with the three-quarters of a cent sales tax.
Okay, let's vote on that. Yeah. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Super, thank you. The next question is when? When do we put it on the ballot? The current increment expires December 31st, 2016. 2014 is the general election. Traditionally, we've done better in larger elections going out when those are. It will have been five years since the last election in 2009, and we always try and go out early enough that we have planning time if that fails, and how we would do that.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My question is, how many other tax issues are on the ballot in 2014?
And that's a good question. I know that there was originally discussion about a statewide transportation tax that was going to be on the ballot. That is not going to be on the ballot. Best of our knowledge, RTD is not putting anything on the ballot. I read the other day that the school district was talking about in a future year during the bond election, so that is not on the ballot. So at this point in time, we're not aware of any competition that this would see. And just to kind of let you know, the schedule for this, to put this on the November ballot, we would need to come to council in late July. Council would have to act on the ordinance by late July to do this at the absolute latest.
I would just go ahead and move that we have the election in 2014 in the general election.
I'll second that. Councilmember Santos.
I'll vote for the motion. My only concern is this, I'll say it now, the sustainability tax that the county is contemplating, I know one city's already put the kibosh on it. I'm not in favor of that right now. We have things that we are paying for regarding the flood. We've already assessed fees to the residents to do this. This is an existing tax that our residents are already paying. That's my only concern.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
The next issue that we brought forward is the issue of the percentage breakdown on how expenditures are done that is currently in the adopting ordinance, and should we maintain that percentage breakdown? And what that does is lay out that 39% of the revenues from the street fund sales tax, not the overall street fund, but from the sales tax, will be used for street maintenance. 20%, 21% for capital construction problems, problems, projects, 31% for the street rehabilitation program, and 9% for the TSM program. One of the issues that we see right now in many of the projects that we're currently doing, there's a huge amount of overlap between these items. When we look at a county line road or an airport road project, we've got an existing two-lane road out there. Are we rehabbing that road? We're widening it? Is it a rehab project? Is it a capital project? We're adding bike lanes and sidewalks? Is it a TSM program? How did all those things overlap? And that can become fairly confusing. We don't have any other funding source at the city where council is limited in how, what those expenditures are. This was originally put forth, once again, because it was a new thing back in eighty-six, and we were trying to be very specific in how that was going to be used, but right now, we don't anticipate any significant changes in what we're doing. However, both staff and the TAB believe that the annual CIP process and the budget process should determine needs, and as we grow, you may find that more funds are going to be moving away from capital projects towards maintaining that enlarged system, and it'll eventually swing towards maintenance and rehabilitation. So based on that, staff and the Transportation Advisory Board recommend eliminating the specific percentages but maintaining the explanation of these items that those funds will be used for in the ordinance.
I'm always afraid of really tight specifics because it ties your hands, it doesn't give you the flexibility. I mean, you guys are a good staff. TAB is a great board. I just think it's too restrictive to, I mean, if you can have specific percentages, you should have bands like, you know, plus or minus 2% or some wiggle room at least at the bare minimum, because it's crazy to operate with your hands tied behind your back that the money's got to come specifically to a certain percent. You know, we're just not that good at predicting how much needs to be maintenance versus CIP. I think you need some flexibility. So I would totally support giving us that flexibility.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
When I hit my button, the comment I was going to ask or make was, just tell us what to do. I don't know what those percentages mean. I'm like, I don't know, they're changing 25% each. I mean, I had no idea. Just tell us what to do. I mean, you changed that on. So I would move that we eliminate the percentages but maintain the explanation of these items in the ordinance, and of course, that's not shutting off debate or conversation, that's just making the motion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Nick, at TAB, you mentioned that, near the end of that meeting, you mentioned that even when you eliminated the percentages, you were within a few percentage points. I'm trying to remember exactly what you said, and Jeff, you might have to help me.
It comes back to the issue that, yeah, and we discussed the fact that when we've looked at the future, and we're going to talk about that in a few minutes, we still come back to that's about where it is. You know, we're not, like I said, we're not seeing any large differential. It's just that it's kind of a, I think it's outgrown itself in some regards, and it limits us, and like, there's such a large overlap in the projects we're doing these days between those categories that it's not as meaningful.
I mean, you were within a few percentage points, even when you eliminated the percentages, you were still within?
One or two of what we would be doing normally anyway.
Thank you.
And if I could add to that, I think you're all making the correct perspective on it. I think the real issue is to consider as well is that the council, in your CIP and your budget every year, that's the work that you do, is to decide on any given year, do we need to spend more money this year maintaining something, or do we have a big capital project that we need to do? And so I think over time, we know we need to spend money on maintenance, we know we need to do some capital work, but to have a prescribed 39% or 21% is really not, I wouldn't say is probably your best way to budget and do capital planning.
Thank you.
And I see that we've addressed this kind of percentage issue when we've done basic policy guidelines around, we could just do a financial policy guideline like we do for other things, saying, you know, because I know that when we have really bad winters, you're going to exceed the 39% because a bad winter means lots more snow removal and then lots more street maintenance. And then, but I would just like to see that, and I support eliminating the percentage requirements, however, I would like to see a follow-up to have some kind of a suggested guideline developed so that people that are very into the transportation system management projects, school and pedestrian safety, don't get a perception that this might be a way that, you know, if we've got transportation planners that just like to have the big machines and do the big projects, that we're going to ignore all the other stuff and not realize that the idea of the percentage in the beginning was to demonstrate that we were going to create a balanced use of the tax. And I think that we can do that in a different way, just have a check-in with, you know, a guideline for the community to have input on. And I don't know whether or not we've ever gone below a certain minimum of, for example, 5% on any of these categories. So it would always, the expectation would be in the community that we have a guideline and that TAB can develop that. develop that guideline, and we can look at historical data. But I'm in support of the elimination. I just want to make sure we have that public input on the balance.
Councilmember Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We always have the ultimate backup. We just fire Harold.
Okay, we've got a motion that's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. And the motion, to be clear, was that we are not going to maintain those specifics.
So the last one's how long? Five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, permanent? A five-year, as we've talked about. Some of the benefits of that is, same as in the past. That's what the community has showed. It requires a regular accountability by the city on that. For a longer period, when you look at a longer period, I would say no other funding source for a core service within the city of Longmont requires us to go out every five years and ask to renew funding for libraries or recreation or any of those items. It allows better long-term planning. When we look at our five-year CIP right now, only one year in five will have five years of funding. When you look at the 2014 CIP, everything past 2016 is unfunded. In the 2015, it'll be everything past 16. Yeah, so until that's passed again, you don't have that. As Councilmember Santos brought up, grant applications. If we're going to apply right now for a grant that's going to become eligible in 2017, we cannot commit to any local funding because we don't have any past December 31st, 2016, and that creates a constraint. Financing options with a five-year are also very limited. You can't do bonding. It's basically cash flow. And in a five-year period like this, it means that you really have to accrue money and save up money for the first three years before you do a lot of those capital projects. You've got the annual ongoing programs that go on.
So part of the two, a slide that Nick showed earlier where he talked about it in terms of ongoing funding, in the sense that the sales tax is used fundamentally for ongoing funding for operations. Technically, it's a more restricted term. And so he's right, we start wiping stuff off. So you start with five, and then as you're moving in your budget and everything else, you start wiping that number off because technically it's not there until you go back and get it approved via vote.
Councilmember Santos?
This was the item that the TAB spent the most time on, had probably the most amount of discussion on, Jeff. Staff recommended longer than a five-year period. The Transportation Advisory Board recommended 10 years, and it was a four-to-three vote at the Transportation Advisory Board. And they actually asked me to explain that four-to-three vote because they wanted it made clear. Of the three opposing, of the three votes against, two of those voted against because they were supporting a 20-year extension, and one for five. So you basically had six that were recommending longer than a five-year, and one that was recommending a five-year period primarily for that same accountability issue. So if I can, so based on that 10 years, what we did was went back and tried to take a look at what we could accomplish and commit to in a 10-year program. And if council will allow me, I'd like to run through that. We come back to first, maintain the existing system. Maintenance and operation, street rehabilitation, $53.1 million. That's based on the current funding and escalating some. It gets through a little over $5 million a year. TSM program, a base program at about $5.7 million, but another part of that TSM program is our pedestrian and bicycle improvements. We have our missing sidewalk sections and our missing trail connections, $5.8 million. You might have noticed if you've driven Ninth Avenue, our new sidewalk on from Lashley to Martin on the south side of the road, that was out of that program. Master plan identified improvements. You saw the master plan. We've looked at $23.7 million. Towards that, I'll run through those in a second. Flood improvements, 100-year storm capacity. We're talking about two other bridges. We've been talking to council about the desire to create a St. Brain River through Longmont from Martin up to Lykan's Gulch that would fund that. We've got Main Street and South Pratt Parkway Bridges taken care of now. We're working with the county on Sunset Street Bridge that leaves Boston and Hoover. And then we also have some bridge rehabilitation programs. So looking at the recommended projects that we believe we could fund in a 10-year program, starting with the corridor, the capacity projects from the master plan, Ken Pratt Boulevard widening, Nelson to Pratt Parkway. We've talked that we've already got the portion from Pratt Parkway to Main Street done in a project, but this would carry that out the rest of the way. Hoover Street widening from State Highway 119 to Nelson, and from Nelson up to Boston, widening those roads to six lanes to allow good capacity through the community on those primary area trails. We also tossed in there the Boston Avenue railroad crossing. We've got the Boston Avenue extension from Main to Martin that's funded through this increment and will be built in 2016. This is that piece that would make that connection across price there where that railroad tracks is. It does require PUC and railroad improvements. It's going to be a hard fight, but that's there. Three intersection projects that go along with those corridors. These were about three out of the top six, I think, intersections, but they're necessary to make those corridors work. That's the Hoover Street State Highway 119 intersection, Hoover Street and Clover Basin Drive intersection, getting that out to two lanes. You know, that left turn backs all the way up into the intersection sometimes at particular lunch hour, and the Hoover Street and Nelson Road intersection. Three bridge projects. I mentioned the Hoover Street Bridge, the Boston Avenue Bridge, widening those to pass 100-year storms, and hopefully in conjunction with the other work that we're proposing to do along the corridor, and the West Third Avenue Bridge. That's the bridge over the Great Western Railroad. And a couple of years ago, we replaced the bridge deck on the eastbound leg. The westbound leg is due in the near future for work. So that 10-year plan totals out versus projected revenues. Some early looks at that would require about $10 million in grant funding to balance out. We've used actually a very low number on the transportation community investment fee, and if we see more growth, that will come up. But that $10 million in grant funding, we feel is very realistic. We talked about the fact that we've got $4.7 million this year, and we have several of those projects that are state highway and on major corridors that would allow us to go after Dr. Cog funding. So we believe that if we had that matching funds, that is a realistic one to approach. So coming back to the core question, how long should an extension be proposed for? TAB recommended 10 years and then a 10-year program. That's what we believe you could accomplish.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, thank you for that explanation. I did see this at TAB. You laid it out. We have other, we have put other things on the ballot, like Open Space Fund that is a much longer tax, because of 2035, 2038, 2035, 37. It's a long time, 20-year tax. This one's for infrastructure and improvement. It's a, you know, we do it every five years. This one is, and I'm going to move it, and I'm going to move it in just a minute, from five years to 10 years, because I think it's important. This is about infrastructure. This is about bridge reconstruction. This is about streets. This is about things, people you can see and touch. Open space, you can. There's certain things that, you know, people can go see. And, you know, open space is great to have, but this is, people use our streets, use our roads, whether it's on bicycles, buses, cars, walking, you name it. We use it, sidewalks, you know, we all use it. It's important. It's important to have a 10-year plan so we can go out for those matching grants, whether it's state or federal funds. So I move that we go from a five-year to a 10-year street tax.
I'll second it. Okay, it was seconded by Councilmember Finley. Councilmember Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My only, my earlier comments, my only concern, I hear we need it. I agree with my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Santos. My only concern, and I don't have the data, so the data is simply how close did it pass by before? I guess I'm just looking at, there's holes. If you have a boat, there's a water line. We can take hits above the water line, but not getting this passed, that's a hit below the water line. I mean, how would we fund our streets? So my only concern is, what is the likelihood versus five and 10 that will pass? That's it.
The last time this was discussed, prior to 2009, council actually included a question on their annual survey about that.
What'd they say?
Well, it said, it said, "Would you support it for five years? Would you support it for 10 years? And would you support it permanent?" And it was kind of a loaded question because you were asked those three in a row. So what are you going to say? The five-year passed pretty substantially, I think about 60-40, and I believe that's pretty close to what the vote was in 2009. And I will say, when this originally passed in 1986, it squeaked by. It was like one of those 51-49 votes. But it has increased over the years because we've shown the community what you can do with that. But the origin, but that survey was that said five years would pass. 10 years, it passed by a lesser amount. And I believe the permanent, I'm not sure it passed or it was very, very close. It was, it might have been on the low side of the 50%.
We can get you that information, too. But I think Nick is right. I think it was in the range of a 55 sort of percent. I think that the difference between 2014 and 2009, one of the compelling differences is the damage that we've sustained through this flood. And if we can show a longer-term street funding source to match up with a storm drainage and federal grant funding source, we might actually have a chance to get this longer. What we've been saying is a seven to 10-year project done. And so it lines up, I think our need of our community is potentially changed. That is another sort of change condition from '09.
Okay. So I guess what I'm hearing is, if I vote for this, everyone promises that it's going to pass. That's what I'm hearing?
So look at the timing issue on this, too. So the reason why they're saying November of this year is because if there is an issue, there's time to bring it back. So it's not, so it's not binding.
Look at that. I'm reasonable people. All right, I'm ready to vote. You got me. You got my vote. All right. Okay, we got backup plan. I like that.
Councilmember Levison?
I always think that the five-year, because it's a short term, is actually a distinct advantage because people, we're asking people for the bond issue in June. And I think having that flexibility, I know it's short, I know the pros and the cons, I just think it gives the voters a feeling of control. And there could be, you know, locking ourselves into 10 years. What happens if we need to change it? What happens if we need to balance something else out that we have community needs for? People see that this tax is for 10 years. There might be something coming up within that 10-year period we want to raise a tax for, and we would, I think, be setting ourselves up for failure in that next increment, whatever it would be. So I really feel more comfortable with the five-year. People will notice the jump from five-year to 10-year, and even though you can lay out the case that, you know, the alignment with the flood stuff, a lot of people have already forgotten about the flood. And that's not really going to matter to them. I think people are looking at their dollars and cents in their pockets. And I also know that with the way the federal government is looking at the Highway Trust Fund and the new transportation bill, having the five-year increment might actually be better for us because if we have to adjust it, then we don't have to go, we have a legitimate reason to go back to the voters in five years to say we might need an adjustment as opposed to a 10-year period. I think it would be harder to go back to the voters and say, "Well, you know, things have gotten much worse, and we asked you for 10 years, but maybe we need more money. So I'm just going to stick with the five years."
Councilmember questions in?
Gosh, well, these are all good points. I see what Councilwoman Levison's saying. And I do think that there is an advantage in that, you know, it's three-fourths of a cent, and if we need the extra quarter of a cent, you know, there's an advantage to that. But I just think that it's really, a five-year plan even for an individual is very, very short-term, and it's really much better if you have at least a 10-year plan. This is something, as an ongoing thing, we need. And I do think that the mood has changed because of the, all the flood damage, and I think people do understand that the ongoing need and the, this is a unique opportunity maybe to get this through when people are still in the mood to think about long-term planning.
Councilmember Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. We are always going to need money for our streets. A street tax has never failed in Longmont. If a 10-year cycle gets us more money in grants, I can't see why we wouldn't do that. Actually, I don't know why the tax isn't permanent. We're always going to need money for streets, but 10 years is a good compromise.
Councilmember Moore? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Are we always going to need streets?
That would be my belief. I believe we will.
I really do like the idea of the longer-term plan because it does allow our CIP to be, allow us to fund our CIP further out. The other side of that is, by not making it permanent, Councilman Finley's suggestion, I think it allows us an opportunity to reset if we need to change the rate, or, you know, maybe there's going to be some magical other funding source where we may not need it in the future, but I wouldn't count on that. And so, you know, I do, I do like the idea of the 10-year extension. And that was my feeling also as I read the packet. So I will be supporting 10-year. Nick, could you flip back a couple of charts?
And one thing, if I could add real quick, Valerie, correct me if I'm wrong. Where did you want to get to?
Before that one. Keep going.
Right there.
Go forward. Forward one. Be right there.
That one?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I think you have, you shouldn't have that bicycle slash pedestrian instead of pedestrian slash bicycle.
Okay. I actually, if I could, one other thing, Valerie, correct me if I'm wrong. How much does an election cost?
Depends, but it's usually around $60,000.
So every time we have this election, it costs us about $60,000 every five years to do that.
I wanted to jump in, too, and a question that Councilmember Moore asked earlier about how you factor in inflation. One of the things that we know in this process is the inflationary cost on the construction projects is really outpacing the revenue cost. So in a 10-year model, it actually gives us the ability to deal with those inflationary pressures in a different way, which at the end of the day, when you look at the cost of the projects, it actually saves money versus if you were doing it on those five-year cycles, because then you're letting the inflation really push you in certain mechanisms. And so that's another piece to the conversation when you actually look at the cost of the projects and how you time those out.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Transportation Board, for coming up with all these recommendations. There are a lot of smart people that work on TAB.
And they work hard on this.
Yes. So I guess we've got a motion, and it's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, that passes six to one. That's Councilmember Levison descending.
Thank you very much. And as we said, we'll be bringing information back as we prepare more of this. We'll have to be back by at least July with an ordinance. We'll be working on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I want everyone to remember, the Cinco de Mayo celebration is this Saturday down at Roosevelt Park. Also wanted to mention, my business of the week is the Smoothie Factory. It's in the 1100 block of Francis week is the Smoothie Factory. It's in the 1100 block of Francis Street. I don't have the exact address, but it's a new business and we should all go give it a try.
Councilmember Moreau.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just like to, um, follow up with the sticker shop program that went on Saturday. Very good success. Uh, we had a good turnout for, from the youth council to actually apply the stickers. It was actually covered on Nine News. It was, there was a news feature on it. And it was really, it was a blast. And I do appreciate council members and the mayor that were able to make it because, um, these, these kids are our future. And I think it's just great for them to, for the council to support their efforts. And on, uh, another note, Cinco de Mayo this weekend, uh, they will be having a vandalism awareness booth as part of the youth council, youth services booth. And so they'll be doing some, some handouts and some freebies, and that's at Roosevelt Park. If you want to, if you'd please show up and support the youth council even some more. Thank you.
Councilmember Moreau. Thank you, Mayor. Golf course met last night. Uh, golf courses are in great shape. Um, in fact, I actually got to play last Thursday at Twin Peaks. Twin Peaks, uh, as most of you know, took a hit during the flood. Um, I only played nine, not very well. Um, did not lose any golf ball. Oh, no, actually, lost one golf ball. But, uh, there's one hole that is modified. Uh, it's a par four that's modified par three. And that's the only one that I can think of that is, uh, under a little bit of construction. But it's, uh, Twin Peaks is actually making a really nice comeback. So I would encourage, uh, folks to go out and play Twin Peaks or go play one of the golf courses here in town, Sunset, Twin Peaks, or Yew Creek. So go out and, and support the, uh, golf courses in Longmont. Thanks.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to also add my encouragement for people to go and attend Cinco de Mayo. And, um, also further compliment, um, Sister Cities on their fundraising event. I think what Sam forgot to mention is that, um, the Ed and Christian Green Dinner actually helps, um, our sister city of Ciudad Guzman who have very limited resources. And the kids have more limited, um, uh, resources within the community to do fundraising and help bring some of their ambassadors. Um, the other thing I would like to alert people to, and I signed up for this, so I guess if I'm saying this publicly, I'm going to actually do it. Um, Live Well Longmont is doing a Get Moving Challenge for, um, May 1st to 30th. And you can sign in, and the challenge is to keep an online activity tracker and, uh, have a minimum of 30 minutes of activity each day. My dogs will be happy because they will be walked every day. Um, so I know many of us already do at least 30 minutes, but some of us that don't are going to get doing it. So, um, I hope others might join me.
Councilmember Moreau.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Whether or not I run again for a second term depends on two things. One, I need to know when the theater's going to be done. The new theater here, we need to figure out, sorry, just, we need to know when that's going to be built. Number two, this is, this is important. This is my time, Councilmember Levinson. This is important. So we have, I need to know, just let's just check with New Mark and I, when the theater's going to be done.
This is important.
And, and what movie will be showing on the IMAX screen?
It's not IMAX. It's a different.
Oh, no, no, I know, the big screen. I don't remember the, the.
RBX.
And also, I also want to know if council has anything planned. If city's planning anything on the 18th of December, 2015, I unfortunately will not be able to participate. Because that's when Star Wars comes out. And so it was announced today, it was announced today, yeah, certainly, it was announced today that Harrison Ford, Mark Hamer, and Carrie Fisher will be once again reprising their roles. And that's, that's, I mean, I, I'm guessing the 16th to the 18th.
You're just asking as an expert.
No, no, I'll be sleeping out. So I'll be, I'll be, I'll be indisposed. So, the what?
Second.
No, 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 yes, yeah. Okay, yeah. So I mean, I just need to know these things so I can plan my future. So.
Do you have to run again to be?
No, I, I won't run if, if there's things going on. I mean, I've got my priorities. So, thank you.
Okay, um, a, a couple of things. Uh, first off, I had the, uh, very fortunate experience to be part of a ceremony tonight to help conduct 50 kids from the Rocky Mountain Elementary School here into the Have a Dream Foundation, uh, program tonight. And I saw Sean Lewis is a mentor to one of those kids was there. And, uh, our, our developer, uh, who's also a sponsor was there tonight. Um, so that was a lot of fun. Um, I also got to, um, go down and testify in front of the business committee on the Wage Equity Bill that the city weighed in on. And, uh, I was able to give pretty compelling testimony to refute some of the testimony that the National Restaurant Association gave that it's too onerous, is onerous for business owners to keep track of wage records for three years when you can have 132 gigabits on a memory stick. Now, uh, that argument just does not wash. Uh, so, uh, anyway, passed that committee six to five today, and we'll move to, um, the House where it's expected to pass there. So keep our fingers crossed. So that's all I have. Um, city manager in comments?
No comments, Mayor Council.
Okay. Where's our city attorney? We can't, we can't, we're in a meeting. Second term.
I promise, Mayor Council.
I just want to know, you know, is our city attorney?
We pay him for tonight.
I'll have to deduct from this break. All right, this meeting is adjourned.